Are you ready? Okay, at seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the business nuclear board meeting to order. Please have all cell phones silenced during the meeting. I look for an approval of the agenda. Oh, take a say hi. I, those, motion carries. Item three, public appearances and citizens comments. No one here, so we'll go on to approval of the consent agenda. I moved to approve the consent again. Circle. Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
New business presentation from W P P I Energy. Like Mr. Marty Grishmire.
If I get up here, that's coming around for everyone. Thanks a lot for letting me come here tonight, I appreciate it. I'm Marty Grishmire, I'm the chief financial officer for W P P I Energy. And we try to come out every other year to be able to just give you guys an update of what's going on at W P P I in the industry. Really wanna keep this in control also if you have questions or you're going along, please interrupt me and rather get you guys the information you want than worry about getting through with what we got prepared here. So just kind of on the overview, the W P P I by the numbers, I just see that W P P I was formed in nineteen eighty. We're up to fifty-one members now in W P P I in three states. Most of our members are in Wisconsin, we have seven up in the Upper Peninsula, Michigan, and three in Iowa. And we're governed by our board of directors, so each of the members have a board, a board member in office that governs W P P I. You guys got Joe and Kevin who are on W P P I's board. In addition to the board, they elect an eleven member executive committee, and that committee meets monthly, does more of the day-to-day approvals for W P P I. The board is able to delegate a lot of their tasks to the executive committee. The executive board meets about three times a year, and I'll put a little plug in, we do have our annual meeting in mid-September. So anyone who can make it to that, that would be great, I know level business board meeting the next day. On our size, we're about a thousand megawatts, a utility that's our peak demand on the hottest summer day, we came pretty close last week. I don't think we quite hit that yet. And then, at least for the summer, and then our total assets is about seven hundred and fifty million dollars, a budget of five hundred and twenty-five million. And out there, we have about four hundred million of that is sales to our number utilities. On the next slide, we can see that our mission and vision statement, our mission statement really guides what W P P I does. It's really hard on the members to help them accomplish more by working together, and it's for reliable, affordable, and responsible electricity. I will provide forward-thinking services, and then we advocate on behalf of the membership. Then you can see our vision there as well. On the next slide, we're coming at our business plan, that kind of guides what staff works on over the five-year period. Our most recent one that ran out, we're in our second year, we developed it in twenty twenty-one with a lot of input from the members. We went around and did some regional small meetings to get everyone's input brought and drafted back to the board, and I think that was in October, and then they approved it in December. You can see the key objectives, it follows right by our mission statements, that's what we're trying to do. And for this year, some of the key things we're working on, our long-term term resource planning, and I'll talk a little bit more about our resources in another couple slides. Essentially, you know, W P P has a good shape, we've got a lot of resources in place, but some of those contracts that we have for resources are starting to expire as we get towards the end of the decade. In the twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-three timeframe, so you just time yet to still plan for those resources, but we gotta start now, start seeing what those next resources will be. Number interconnection for solar, not definitely solar, just broke down solar, you're seeing here, I'm assuming it's more than you did five years ago. I think W P P I has a system, we had under three hundred just a few years ago, now we're over thirteen hundred, and that's been rolling for five days. So we really wanna start trying to figure out how to help numbers through the air connection process, because it does take a lot of time and effort to get those through. And finally, the other thing is just our organizational staff, I think it's probably common for a lot of utilities, we're all getting a little bit older, and we're putting together some stuff for the writing agencies. And I calculated between Mike Peters, our CEO, and his five direct reports, we've got over two hundred years of industry experience. So that has a good thing, you got people that understand the industry and that worked with it for a long time. Also means you've got to start training that next generation of leaders in getting prepared for that. But the good news is we have a little time, I don't think any of us will retire in the next couple of years, but in that next three to seven-year period, you'll probably transition to a number of W P P I. Something ahead, if we get some power cost. So if you look at the graph there, you see through twenty eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, where it didn't run, power cost just over seventy dollars a kilowatt hour. And this is the system average, yours may be a little bit higher or lower, but depending on load factor of your customers and in your system. But overall, it was a real good bubble in April, and we saw it start going up in the middle of twenty twenty-one. And what kind of happened is we, everyone was kind of coming out of COVID, everything was opening up, and all of a sudden, they had a lot more demand on natural gas. The rail and carbon, they have a lot of demands, they were trying to get everything back into the system, ignoring all the supply chain issues you've heard about. Well, that was having a hard time getting coal to the coal plants, which meant they had to burn more natural gas, which meant the costs were higher with the natural gas as well. So we started kind of rock in twenty twenty-one, they continued on into twenty twenty-two. And since we had a full year in twenty-two, the price went even higher on the market energy prices, we saw the highest there at eighty-two fifty. What's interesting is, we seem like we're at the January this year, and it was like the light switch turned, and everything dropped right off on natural gas prices drop. This spring, we were down under two dollars a million beats view for natural gas, got up in that eight, nine dollar range last year, just a huge difference there. Market energy prices fell, so instead of us being roughly ten percent above, but if it now went around the ball, turn the whole budget here going into twenty twenty-three. So hopefully that'll keep going here, even with the summer months, we've been seeing prices have been fairly stable, and we're looking good so far this year. On the next slide, you can see some of our resource mix there. One of the things to note there, you can see coal on the left, a prior chart, there was about sixty-two percent of W P P I's people mix in twenty-ten. It's down to thirty-four percent today. A lot of that is some of the purchases that we rely on, those utilities had a lot of coal, you're starting to see some coal plants being retired, and more announced to be retired in Wisconsin. W P P I still has two coal plants that we, that we are co-owners in. One of them in Minnesota, and then one over Milwaukee. Both of the co-owners of that have announced that they plan to be coal-free by twenty thirty-five. So they may be converting to natural gas, but they plan to stop running coal by twenty thirty-five. The other thing, though, if you look at that chart on the right side, at W P P I has put a diverse fuel mix, I mean, we're relying on a big chunk of natural gas, nuclear, we buy from the Point Beach Nuclear Power Plant. It's a purchased power, so they produce it, we pay them for it, and they deliver it, W P P I doesn't have any liability for any nuclear material or waste over on the site, it's just a pure, we buy the output of it. So that makes up another big chunk of our power supply, as well, you can see there are renewables, I think a pretty big slice, there's a bad number of wind projects, and then last year, we started purchasing from a solar project as well. The next one, just to have a map of those resources, and you kind of sneak, give you an idea of the different types of people we've got. So I guess five different wind projects, we've got a couple in Iowa, one down in Illinois, and a couple in Wisconsin. And we've got some natural gas plants, one in Illinois, a couple in Wisconsin, and then you have the mentioned Point Beach Nuclear Plant we buy from. And then the solar project is actually right at the nuclear plant, some of the land is a, they own a lot of land right around the plant. Some of the projects are there, and that's why they lease a little bit of land outside of the plant there. Jumping on, you can see on the environmental, W P P I has reached a target of being zero carbon by twenty fifty. That's a long ways out, we are a little on track to reduce our carbon output by forty-five percent compared to twenty-two thousand five to twenty twenty-five, so in a couple of years, we'll look at that target. We still, like I said earlier, one of the ways we're planning to get to that direction is that the coal plants we have have announced to not burn coal by twenty thirty-five. We continue to look for new renewable resources, our last resources, they put on a system that is renewable, the solar project I mentioned at Point Beach, and then a wind project down in northern Illinois. So it's kind of the direction we've been placing. However, I think the next few slides are kind of interesting, and that is still, why we still need a diverse resource portfolio. So some of these are some data that we actually have from our Point Beach Solar Project. So looking at in June, this was from June of last year, you can see the top red line is what it is when there's a sunny day. You can see, obviously, the sun comes up about seven o'clock in the morning, it hits full output at a hundred megawatts, and it stays there until evening, when the sun goes down, and then it drops off. The orange line there shows what happens when there's kind of a partly cloudy day, and see, getting some old cats coming through, and you see the output, it kind of bounces around whenever you get the sun. And then you get a cloudy day, even in June, you can see what happens to the output that day, only a little, must have been a little break in the clouds there around the five, six o'clock in the evening, so it does vary, and that's one of the challenges, we'll see with renewables, and like I said, why we're still gonna consider having that diverse portfolio. Another interesting thing that we could point out with our new solar project, it's just how different it is from the summer and the winter. So you look at the next slide there, you see that same red graph of sunny days in the summer months. The yellow line there shows just how much less output we get during the winter, even on a sunny day. So that means you gotta kind of take your seasons into effect. The good news with this, obviously, the loads are higher during summer day, in the summer, when the temperature is high, so there's a good resource that, of that time period.
So in the winter here, do your solar panels adjust to, okay?
Because they'll, you know.
He's still even with the.
The time of day, the angle of the sun and everything.
Uh, maybe a kilowatt.
So maybe once a thousand kilowatt.
And so, I mean, you always get these things empowering the amount of houses.
Yeah, so maybe a good way to say, your peak load is about five megawatts on a hot summer day in here in the layers, let's see.
Oh, total, yeah.
All the businesses and houses combined is about five megawatts when you hit your peak. So this plant is even twenty times that size of the village of the Glarus.
So even if, even at the.
But you also have like loss based off of how far that electrical needs to go through cabling. And there's a lot of other technical factors when it comes to it, but yeah, essentially what they're getting is, what, five times you said?
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty times, um, yeah, but what?
At least put into the.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yes, this is a pretty good, so it would be the size of our largest member would have a large hundred megawatts. You're talking about kind of like a con on the Nasha, some of those who are serving big paper mill. Customer. And then, and it's interesting too, with the last graph there, it just shows how wind can, you know, on a very windy day, can almost get its full output, this is a fifty megawatt, I'm coming into sixty fifty-four. Or just above we draft there on the red line, orange, where kind of the wind's varying, and then you get a low wind day, calm day, you just don't get the output. So like I said, we need a combination of things to keep reading the system, right, because you have to have resources to meet load, whatever the load is there.
I don't see anything in here in regards to hydroelectric, is that just not a viable option in Wisconsin?
So, um, a couple, Kakana actually has quite a bit of hydro, one of our numbers, and they actually had it if they came onto the system. And so they, they keep that to serve their own load. W P P I, we don't have any hydro facilities at this time. You know, I think when the existing dams are been in place and the hydro was built a number of years ago, they still can be very economical, because they don't cost much. Right, I just up even those facilities, some of the hydro plants have been running for a hundred years, but to develop new ones would be difficult.
Yeah. Do you know firsthand, and I'm sure it's based off of each hydroelectric, like what the peak megawatts, megawatts would have been, can be?
Hydro?
Yeah.
So they vary across, I think, kind of thinking Wisconsin, so I think it kind of has about twenty megawatts, about four or five dams. They're, they're running four or five, you get like on the Wisconsin River, I want to say some of them might get up to like thirty megawatts or so, as you get kind of towards Castle Rock, the Dell, some of those. The ones in Wisconsin don't tend to be real big, you know, you get out west, and then you can see like a thousand megawatt ones as you get out like in Washington and so. So it really just depends, it's all physics, I guess. How much, you know, how much you've got, force you've got to be able to generate.
Yeah, to push through the motors and how much those motors can actually handle and, you know, all those fun things, but I was just curious.
Wisconsin does have, there's kind of, there's, there's quite a few of the hydro around, like I said, Wisconsin River, there's quite a few hydro dams, and so they tend to be on the smaller side though.
Gotcha.
Another thing on the, the keeping the cost down there, one thing we were able to accomplish, we actually locked it in last year, and then did the finance saying we closed on April sixth. And that was, uh, we were able to refund about a hundred and twelve million dollars of our twenty thirteen A bonds. And we're getting about a one point seven million dollar a year savings to W P P I through that, we won the install. That was a good thing, we're looking at some more, we've got some bonds, sixty-six million that are callable in twenty fourteen, so I'm kind of looking at those, seeing when we could possibly set up the refinance those next years. So won't be as big a transaction, but hopefully be able to get some savings, obviously, the interest rates are going out since when we locked this one in, so it might not be as much, but obviously, we'll take whatever we can, we can get there. And finally, just the last page, we do have a lot of information out there on our website, we've got an annual report that's been out for a whole month now. I forget about our reliable, affordable, responsible electricity, and then really just want to encourage you, stay involved, W P P I. Annual meetings, always a good time to meet, meet, get together with other utilities that are part of W P P I, married with good speakers there on Thursday, and then the business meeting on Friday. And I know you guys are close to our E S M, she's down here a lot, she can get you whatever you need. And feel free to reach out to me, I, like I said, I'm on the finance side, if you have any questions, feel free, if there's anything that gives you answer reflections, reach out anytime. I don't know what I got, but happy to take any questions, does anyone like you know? I appreciate you having me come down, we've been pretty dry down here today, and I haven't been in the glare for a while, so it was really neat to see the towers and stuff, it's nice.
Thank you.
Okay. Item B, considering this government development agreement with the nuclear school district.
So, um, there's a draft development agreement in your packet, just to back up a little bit, some background on this. So as you may recall, back when we were discussing the school going off of Windlock, there was discussions on an access road, and it was decided to access at Windlock at the property. I'm forgetting the exact address here, a moment. Seven nineteen Windlock Street. So the plan was to do a land swap with that property owner, they would give a front portion of their property that would allow us to straighten out the road a little bit and get access to that school property. And then the school would give them a little bit more land on their backyard. So the school is no longer building on that property, they're expanding their elementary school, but they would like to sell this property. And getting that access situated is still helpful for that sale and for future development. So we've created this development agreement, which will start that process. So this development agreement would basically give, the school would be giving us that backyard property, and then we would use that backyard property to do a land swap with the property owner. So it's, instead of doing all three together in one agreement, we're doing one agreement and then another agreement, and the attorneys prefer that route instead of doing all three at the same time.
Why?
I, I think it has to do with payment and something.
It seems like more fees. That the village will be paying for, you do this, this whole thing, to me, I mean, they've done a certified survey map, why not? Why not do a certified survey map that dedicates that as, I just seems like more potentially fee for sure, but if they have a easy way to do it.
They thought this would be the simplest route, and I apologize, I don't exactly remember what the reasoning was, but.
Would the school district be beating us? Property from their portions, so that we would have a full sixty-six foot right away for the access point then?
There, so we're actually getting it from the property owner.
A full sixty-six?
I'm not sure what the.
You start about the width of the X is going into that property.
Yeah, right, so our current ordinance requires sixty feet.
Okay.
So I don't know if that, and Joe can maybe speak to that on what we're planning.
For the back, the back part of the lot that we were gonna build, because the road was not accessible, it's not a village road, and it's not being built as a, as a, it was just an access drive. So as of this point, whoever owns that property is still gonna have a private drive into that area.
So if that goes into home development, that will still, that will not be the only access to that development, correct?
Well, it could be an access point, but, um, they're gonna say that is, is whoever develops it and puts, puts a road in there, is then gonna have to give us the sixty feet access per village, and they have to build it up to our spouse.
Right, yeah, okay, so this is just getting the land that would require that.
Yes.
Okay.
So we'd be getting a little strip on the north.
Correct.
Village would acquire ownership of that, and then in exchange, we would give them the back portion.
Or, so this development agreement just transfers the school portion of the property to us, and then we still need to get an agreement with the property owner to give them that, so.
And then at some point, would we look at updating our comprehensive plan to remove some of the access points that were an issue in the past, and showing a new access point? You know, for, for future development, so that we have a leg to stand on and say, this is what we're seeing. I think we should, I think that's probably a certain item, but we should look at updating that comprehensive plan, so.
Are you talking about just the village's comprehensive plan?
Show those as an access, you know, next to, um, the dish property.
Right.
Shows up potential access on a land use plan, and we should update that.
Yeah.
And then if we're still thinking of those other connections, if it's residential.
I think it's actually currently platted that way too.
But it's platted?
Or like the, not the school property, but how the rest of it is platted, I think it is platted as a, I'd have to go back and look at it, but.
Well, it is cladded, isn't it, Joe?
Dish exit entrance.
Not.
There was still a lot of controversy over that, about how one surveyor says there's nothing there, and another surveyor says, yeah, there's something there.
Yeah.
And I always fought for that, because the Larcans are the ones that did that property, if they're in Tularson, there was no access there. And then all of a sudden, the next thing you know, this company's saying, yeah, there's an access there.
So you're talking about accesses.
By, by Donuts. Donuts, yes.
But I.
Could be because of the comprehensive plan, so I'm saying.
My future ears.
My question, Joe, didn't you show me a map that that's all plotted out at one time?
Well, the, the map that we have that was plotted out was when somebody was gonna develop it, and the plant, so they show like roads coming in on wherever. But that meant nothing, because they never put shovel in there.
Right, you have to go through a proper approval process, that's a conceptual layout of what their vision was, and that has to be approved by village.
Right, I'm not saying it was ever.
It's an option that somebody.
They're coming off.
It's not, no, I don't think, no. Not that I don't love, that's what I'm saying.
But I guess we should get back to our original agreement with the school district.
Still have to.
Because they're gonna get thirty feet. Thirty feet on their property, width of their property, right? At thirty feet to the west.
Yes, yes. I guess I'll also add that the school board has already reviewed this and approved it.
Okay, I, I do have one comment on the actual resolution. Um, this is just a survey of me and my experience, I, I don't know if the word condemnation is the appropriate term, so obtaining right of way, I, I think. I think the more appropriate terminology would be the village exercising their rights under eminent domain. And that is the taking of private property for public use. I, I don't think it's a condemnation process, I think it's a process of eminent domain, and I just want to make sure that we are clear on that.
Okay.
And I run that by our attorney.
Okay.
But that is, that is my understanding of how, how it works, condemnation is a really different process, I think, yes, it is. So I, I just want to make sure we have the language correct, that we're under no obligation to exercise that right at this point in time, because, you know, this isn't a dumb deal. When I tell somebody to come do something, if we can't reach an agreement, but. Fine.
You're right about the eminent domain.
Yeah, and they may have to go back to their attorney to approve it, but I just want to make sure the village is protected.
Yep, I can go over that language with our attorney.
Well, I just.
I guess so. So I mean, we need to table this here until.
Um, if you're comfortable with me working that out with the attorney, that approve it with that, I guess, clause.
Yeah.
So we don't have to come back, but it's totally up to you if you're not comfortable with that.
I, I, I mean, I call it your attention, it sounds like you work with the attorneys, I think that's the appropriate language to use.
Yes, attorney draw this up, we did their.
I believe ours did, input from theirs.
So we need some kind of a motion.
Did we, our attorney has looked this over?
I move to approve it with that. I move to approve it with that wording change, condemnation to eminent domain.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
And just to clarify, I guess, um consultation, the village attorney. Just in case for some reason that is the correct language, I'm not an attorney, I don't know for sure.
That the village attorney says, ah, you're wrong, you gotta change.
Okay. It wouldn't, but you could put that in the motion.
Are you open for the friendly amendment?
Yes, yes.
I think that's what it's called, right?
So just to clarify, I think the consensus was that it wouldn't need to come back. I would just talk with the attorney, but if you want it to come back, it it can, it's up to the board.
Well, I think we'd like to.
We'd like to know.
We'd like to know if.
Yeah, bring it back to the board.
Wanna table this then until?
I think that's probably. Move on, yes.
Because right now I have a motion back to the second.
Yeah, I think I said second.
Oh. Okay.
There was a second.
Well, oh, I just wanna make sure, cause I think the motion was still being worded when the second came in because I have to approve development agreement with the nuclear school district with the wording change from condemnation to eminent domain with consultation of village attorney is what I have. Is that correct?
Well.
And can we add and bring back to the board for review? Well, I guess once it makes the decision.
Only if.
Yeah, only if, yeah.
Unless the.
Yeah, comes up with some.
A problem or whatever. Well, we probably would have moved forward with this either way. Make an amendment to your motion to say move to approve the resolution subject to the additional language of. You you have by way of cond- condemnation and or the rights of the village exercising their power.
Of eminent.
Under eminent domain. Should the village attorney deem that language appropriate? Makes sense. Is it needed? I think it would help clarify the motion in what was brought in. Just a suggestion.
So it was not a motion, correct?
That was, I was just, cause he made.
I would, I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
The moves to amend.
Section, please, section three.
Yeah, agreement. Mike can read it to you again.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I.
Um.
By way of.
Um condemnation and or the village exercising their rights under eminent domain. Where, where are you adding this? Right here. Bottom of the very first page. Yeah, by way of condemnation and or village exercising their rights under eminent domain.
Or whichever the attorney deems appropriate, is what it means basically.
So I I have the original motion as wording change from condemnation to eminent domain with consultation of village attorney. And we're amending it to condemnation and or village exercising rights under eminent domain.
Should, should the village attorney deem this language appropriate?
Uh attorney.
Oh, we're saying we're not.
Name.
It'll be one or the other.
Okay.
I don't, you you say.
No, we're saying we're not gonna, we're, we're not going to, oh, right, we wouldn't exercise undertake. Right, to obtain this time access by right of answer, cause yeah, we don't have a need for it. Genuine. That could be an extraordinary measure to take. It's not.
I'm sure he'll come back with the wording that's appropriate, the attorney, once he.
Yeah.
Gets sense of what.
Either way, it's a.
Yeah, the current motion still doesn't have it coming back to the board, so to be sure that's clear, right?
Two separate sentences.
Well, we've already approved it and then maybe just give us a summary and update. Yes. An update. Yeah, an update is expected to the village board. Recommended.
Yeah, so what's the motion?
Already done.
One, Mike.
So I think, I think the only, the only major change with the amendments is the and or. The original one, we were, I just wanna make sure it's clear, the original one, we are changing condemnation to eminent domain with consultation of village attorney. The amendment says to condemnation and or.
Yeah.
Village exercising rights under eminent domain, should the village attorney deem the language appropriate?
Yeah.
And then the village board would like an update on the agreement.
Yeah.
And we have a motion and a second on that.
Yeah, I don't have a second on the amendment, do I need one?
All we need.
Oh, my, yeah, second. Keep it simple.
Need a motion.
Larry did.
I made the motion, he made the friendly motion, friendly amendment.
That's what it's called.
Yeah.
Yeah, Michael did.
That's how I knew it. Michael Marty.
Yeah.
I got it on my meter.
And Michael Bell. Both times. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries. Uh, item C, consideration discussion nuclear school district order and sewer utility refund. Or?
Yeah, okay, so uh a couple of weeks ago, our utility staff discovered that there was a utility billing error with the school district's football field. So the football field um was being billed twice, once on the football field account and once on the elementary school account, as well as was being charged for sewer fees, it does not have sewer. Um so this has been going on for quite a long time. Um according to the P S C, we have to go back seven years to correct our uh errors. And so we calculated over seven years that uh the water not overcharged was thirty-five hundred dollars and the sewer amount overcharged was sixty-eight hundred dollars for a total of ten thousand three hundred and one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Um so we don't necessarily really have a choice. We we do really need to refund this, uh but I did wanna bring it to the board because that is quite a big chunk of change. Um so we've already communicated with the school district, um and we're working with them. Um actually, on this uh claims, we already have the check for the thirty-five hundred going to the school district. And then um the other sixty-seven hundred was credited to their utility bill and then an additional, I think, one thousand something is gonna just be sent as a check to the school. Um so obviously, we hate to see errors like this happen. Um it's just something that kind of never was noticed before. And so we we wanted to fix it as soon as possible and so that's why we got it on the check run and that's why I'm bringing it to you um today, but happy to answer any questions on that.
Who identified the mistake?
So uh the staff member from the school reached out asking about some utility charges and we actually had, I think it was Jason that went out um and actually went in, there's like a cabinet they go in or? Yeah, it's um, he went in and discovered the the issue and then Beth is the one who did all the calculations on what we owe them. And Joe, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but.
They've been doing it for years, nobody affected, Jason's not affected until somebody says something. And Jason was like, uh, I don't know if you know your home plumbing? And they had no idea. So what they were doing was it was going through the main meter and then we were metering it there and it was going out and we put on another meter, we'll hear that pipe was already hooked in. And they said, no, that's not the way it is, well, it is like that, so. I mean, nobody caught it.
So they they have a separate meter.
No, they have main meters that come in on main, there's two. And then they have this meter that does nothing but outside. Well, what was happening, it's going through both of those meters and we should only be doing it on one.
Well, and where is fault for that? I mean, if that happened at my house, I I think I might be at fault. I'm just posing the question based on tech. We're doing our chart based on the meter, huh? We're doing charters based on the meters.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got several meter for outside. Yeah, so the bypass is the supercharge.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So.
Then that's what it should have been doing, if if I'm correct.
But.
Should have been doing.
But my separate meters, my responsibility, and I favor that.
Yeah.
So we're completely at fault, is that, is that what we're saying?
I believe so, yeah.
Going through two meters, the same water.
House going through two meters, huh? How the, how do we know that? I don't, and how was, how was that discovered?
Supposedly Jason went down in the second, found the pipe that goes up.
And we know for a fact that it goes.
And so, and so that's our. Hey, that's our end of the, they prove it, utility, it's not their end.
Are we the ones who installed all those meters?
Uh, we installed the big meters on the things, when they put that meter out, Jason usually goes, oh, that's not.
Who did, who did the honors?
We. So we did both of them.
Many, many years ago.
Yeah, it's something they should have got caught a long time ago.
We have done issues like this in the past where we split the difference and didn't hold one entity accountable.
Well, this, there is one entity accountable for this.
Yeah.
And.
Village. All clear, man. Okay. Well, at least we have.
Figured out now.
Yeah, figured out. Yeah, we got a nice green football field.
Good words there. To our neighbors. Who found it?
Well, Jason, no, somebody, Jason's the one that found it for him, but it was uh their custodian. Was the one that was asking for multiple.
He should get a bonus.
We don't. It's not coming out of our act, yeah, this is.
Not coming.
Yeah.
Laura, we don't need to take an ass.
No, you don't, no, I just wanted to make you aware, it's a big chunk of change, sorry.
Okay, uh, item D, consideration of custom village board salaries.
All right, um so this has been brought up by village board members in the past, so I wanted to make you aware that um trustee salaries are actually in the municipal code. Um so if we wanted to change that, we will have to change the code. And I wanted to point out as well that the code states um that salary will remain un- unchanged by ordinance and, sorry, shall, the salary shall not be increased or diminished during your term of office. That's what the municipal code states. Um so likely what we have to do is pass an ordinance for the next term. Um and so that would impact that budget year. Um so I just wanted to make you aware of that. And if you would like to increase salaries for a future term, I'd be happy to uh draft an ordinance for that. Um but just wanted to bring that to your attention and get feedback on that.
When was the last time it was changed?
Yeah, so I was gonna ask.
I.
Well, I've been here fifteen years.
I think it's been a very, I think probably like two thousand, well, it's probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, you've done it for the money. Anybody?
Would you see my two thousand one car?
That was not a rhetorical question.
I just purchased the two thousand one car.
I think it's the way it is. Considering our budget constraints. I know, what's a few bucks for us or to the, to the board members? Um, a few bucks for the village budget could buy something for somebody. Yeah, did you, I've been on a fine commission seventeen years as well.
Paid for that, didn't I?
It's a, it's involved in your community.
Hey, it's competition. That's the way I think it is.
I'm gonna move that we leave the uh, we don't even need a motion, do we? Uh, consideration.
If somebody wants to change it.
Only if they want to change it.
I would say, yeah. Do you feel the need?
Uh, no.
I don't, I don't either. Right. I'll joke about it, up and down the street, but.
Roger, what, what are your thoughts on that?
It's, it's nice to have a little bit of a bonus here, but you know, it's. It's, yeah, we're not here to.
You're lucky we're recording this, Mr. Philip. I heard you though. Okay, just in agreement. Uh, nothing for Parks and Rec?
Um, nothing.
Well, I could comment on the new concrete pad in Park.
Well.
Nobody's noticed it yet.
Oh, I noticed, I didn't want to say everything.
Okay.
All right, well, if you just want some comment, yeah, there's a new concrete pad in the park.
All right.
Well, I hope everybody can see.
Is anybody?
And uh, there's other things that could be brought up, but um, I don't see the point. At this time, like I said, at this time. So, yeah, and uh. Amy, are you on top of what's on there?
Yeah, Joe. Joe, I have everything. So, yeah, it's gonna here for a little bit longer, like next week possibly we'll.
Yeah, when can people start charging?
Uh, as soon as the wires are connected in there.
Gotta be a sunny day, just.
There's, I think, there's a lot for the phone.
Okay, moving on, consideration discussion, yield sign on Ninth Avenue at Eighth Street. Joe brought this up, cause we got one in. Anthony.
Avenue eight. And a left is a stop sign.
Yeah.
Left was a stop sign. So the only reason why they don't want to put a stop sign there is because when you're coming up a hill and then you try to get going again, you might not.
Yeah.
So in the.
Because of the location.
Yields make sense in this house.
I don't know, there used to be one there before. I'm sorry, Jeff. There used to be one there, somebody hit it and the former streets supervisor didn't bring it, saw it, it went the path of the hill. Yeah, right. Coming off the hill there, just.
Right.
It's a tough one in the snow.
I don't think it's in the ordinance, but.
I was wondering, if it was previously there, I don't even, I don't know if we would need any form of.
If it needs a motion, make a motion to have the yield sign installed on Eighth.
Second.
Ninth Avenue and Eighth Street.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, close motion carries. Uh, personal finance, nothing, president's report, nothing. Item ten, village board will adjourn in the closed session soon to Wisconsin State statute ninety-five, nineteen eighty-five one E, delivering or negotiating investment of public funds or conducting other specific public business whenever repetitive or bargaining reasons inspire closed session may recompete with concession pursuant to state statute nineteen eighty-five. And construct consideration of offered purchase portion of property located at six hundred and fourth Avenue for village right of way. For villages right away. We need a roll call, we need a motion first.
Second.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Chuck Phillipsen?
Yes.
Mike Marty?
Yes.
Larry Susie?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz?
Yes.
Robert Chapman?
Yes, sure.